We're gonna start our regular meeting and I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll start with our pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanna ask if we please have a moment of silence for the death of several officers throughout the nation. Heavenly Father, we pray for all who at this time mourn the death of officers killed in the line of duty throughout our country. We ask for your comfort and strength to be especially with their loved ones and colleagues. We pray also for those who continue to be in danger from this violence. We thank them for their constant courage and devotion to protect our communities. In Jesus's name we pray.
We have the Mission Chamber of Commerce giving us a report.
Good afternoon. We had a ribbon cutting for Smile &amp; Shine on Friday, July 8th at 4:00 PM at 1701 West Mile 3 Road, Suite E. Guests were given a tour of the facility and it was a great turnout. Amazing technology at this new dentistry facility. It was excellent. We will welcome new Chamber member Contempo Fitness Studio with ribbon cutting this Thursday at 10:30 AM at 2301 East Griffin Parkway, Suite A. We hope to see you out there showing your support. And of course, we are still gearing up for our big summer event on July 30th, our Chef's Barbecue Throwdown and Car Show. Through this event, we will provide $1,000 scholarships for each high school from MCISD and Sheri Land ISD. The students who qualify plan to further their education by participating in any of the East theme programs. That would include entrepreneurship, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. We're glad to have the city's support and we are looking forward to having the museum and the fire department out there as well. This event is free, but we are selling $10 wristbands to taste samples from each cooking team and we encourage attendees to order those before the event by contacting the Chamber. If you have any questions, please contact the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce at 956-585-2727. Thank you.
Thank you. Department reports, we have them in our packet. If anybody has any questions about those reports, don't hesitate to ask right now.
Mayor, there's no questions. I would like to put into formal motion that we accept the departmental reports as presented in writing for us.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? If not, we'll go on to our public hearings and we have one public hearing. Mr. Tijerina.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a conditional use permit at Sada Stacos Mobile Food Unit located at 808 South Sheri Road, Lot 5A, Simron Crossing's Phase 2 subdivision and this property's own C3. The applicant is Sada Investments and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On July 11th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the conditional use permit. The property's located approximately 500 feet south of the expressway along the west side of Sheri Road. This conditional use permit was last approved on May 26th of 2015 for one year and this would be the second time that it comes before us. There was no public opposition at the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for six months. Staff is recommending approval for six months. I made contact as per our city manager. I had the opportunity to talk to the owner and advise them that our recommendation would be such based on the fact that we're looking at a moratorium on this and they're not against it. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we ask that we go ahead and approve ordinance 4370 and also approve the conditional use permit for six months.
So moved, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Now, we would call, we're gonna go to another item in the agenda and we're gonna call for executive session at this time. So, we all have to excuse us.
Mayor, I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.01.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, and just before we go into executive session, my understanding is the council wishes to go into executive session, item that's being called out of order on 4.4 of the agenda, is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I'm also asking the council to consider the other items of executive session, 7.1A and 7.2A.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I move that we reconvene.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. For the note, Mr. Prata is absent today. Was he in?
No, sir. He's feeling ill. He sent a text message that he wasn't feeling well.
You think so? Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
He was making a note a few minutes ago. Okay, next item is the disposition of minutes. We have a meeting that we had on the 27th of June of 2016. We do need a motion to approve those minutes.
I move for approval. Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 3.1, Mission Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Raza? MDC?
3.1.
3.1, Mayor. These are the acknowledgements received of minutes for the meetings of the EDC in April 27, 2017. And we do have three other acknowledgements, which are the Mission Redevelopment Authority at May the 31st, 2016, and Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone on May the 31st, 2016, and the last one being the Spear Memorial Library Board, May 17, 2016. We're asking the council to approve the acknowledgements of this receipt of minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.1, Mr. Tijerina.
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council, item 4.1 is a discussion and action to adopt an ordinance to impose a moratorium on the issuance of permits for mobile food units and portable buildings for the use of the preparation and/or sale of food and beverages within the city limits of Mission. Staff is seeking approval for the imposition of a moratorium on the issuance of permits for mobile food units and portable buildings for the use of preparation and/or sale of food and beverages within the city limits of Mission. Staff has determined that it will be in the best interest of the citizens of Mission to impose a moratorium for a period of 180 days. The temporary suspension of permits for mobile food units and portable buildings for the use of preparation and/or sale of food and beverages will allow the City of Mission to study the current state of the regulations and develop a comprehensive plan to address concerns. Staff recommends approval, as does our city manager. This matters now before you, Mayor and Council.
This is a moratorium, no? With wheels and no wheels?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. What's the ordinance number?
4371.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4371. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.2?
4.2, Mayor and City Council is a Sign Code variance request to install a digital face on the west-facing panel of a proposed billboard sign located approximately 1/4 mile east of Stewart Road along the south side of US Expressway 83, being a tract of land located on United Irrigation District Canal right-of-way between lots 161 and 162 John H. Sheri subdivision as requested by Media Choice. Staff is in receipt of a variance request to install 14-by-48 digital billboard sign at the location described above as requested by the applicant. Section 86-1555F of the Sign Code states, "No billboard signs shall have any LED lights and electronic or motorized motion component of faces." So, the proposed billboard meets Texas Department of Transportation Sign Code digital and spacing requirements under the state code. Furthermore, the billboard meets the city's spacing requirements as well. I have included in your packet a copy of our current Sign Code, also a letter from Media Choice, some exhibits that you have before on your screens, a copy of the lease agreement that Media Choice has with UID, there's a copy of the lease agreement way at the end, and also a copy of sections of the Texas Administrative Code that permit these type of signs. So, this is a variance request. Mr. Craig Jenkins is here on behalf of Media Choice. If you have any questions, this matters now before you.
Okay. The recommendation is to go ahead and give him a variance?
Yes, sir. We're recommending approval.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the variance.
Mayor, I move that we approve it, but I also have a question after, if I do get a second.
We have a motion?
Second.
The second.
The question is, if Mr. Tijerina can start looking at, instead of coming in for a variance, maybe we need to revisit the ordinance because it's, I think, it's a new trend that's coming around the corner?
Yes, sir.
You know, so maybe like that we don't have to come for variances all the time.
Yes, sir. We'll do that, sir.
That's correct, sir. We've had that conversation already. We're working on that.
And also to have in place the dimming mechanism so that they're not as bright as some are on the expressway presently?
Yes, ma'am. We'll do that. And this sign, this billboard, Mayor, the colors are not bright. They're very, very clear, very nice, and they meet state goals.
You should look at it on the cost, on the value of the sign.
Yes, sir.
You know, how much is the one that has no lighting to compare to the one that has digital?
Okay.
The one that has digital is worth a lot of money and the tax rate-
Yes, sir.
-that we have can bring some money, tax money into the cover.
Yes, sir.
I don't see why we have to argue. I mean, there's a win-win by doing the digital signs-
Yes, sir, Mayor.
-that I'm sure they're very expensive and of course, the tax rate that they'll have is the same as any other house and it's gonna bring in a lot of money into the cover. But that's the way I look at it.
Yes, sir.
The other one is just a board-
Their bill.
...and it's not worth very much.
Yes, sir.
That's why I'm asking for revisit, Mayor, so we can integrate the process into the ordinance and we can generate-
Did we vote on it?
Not.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
4.3?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This resolution is approving a resolution number 2016-04, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the City of Mission Economic Development Corporation, adopted on June 28th, 2016, authorizing and approving a project on a loan in terms thereof in the amount of $6 million to finance the purchase and development of certain real property, approving the execution and delivery of loan documents relating thereto, delegating authority to the chief executive officer to consummate the loan and containing other matters thereto. Mayor and Council, this is regarding the property next to the convention center, the proposed conference center.
You want authorization to go ahead and do this? Okay.
Yes, sir.
We have resolution 1464 that we need to approve.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
The motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon again. 4.4 is an agenda item that we discussed in executive session. I believe this is an item that we're gonna go ahead and take no action?
It's up to the council whether the council wishes to take no action or if there's a motion to table, whatever the council prefers at this point.
No action at all. We're waiting to see if we could get the correct amount of years that we want financed. Our community's, our city's general is 15 years and that's what we wanna do. The council agrees with me on this issue and we're not gonna be dealing at 30 years. We're gonna be dealing at 15 years and we're gonna try and see if we can find the best interest rate we can get as soon as possible. So, I have instructed Martin to go out there and pay for the land as soon as, maybe in the next day or so, and that can take care of the land and then we can take our time as far as getting this whole thing done in 15 years. And I think all of the council agrees with me on the 15 years.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, what else?
Item 4.5, Mayor, we have an ordinance. We're requesting authorization on the issuance and sale and delivery of City of Mission, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2016, leaving a continuing direct annual ad valorem tax, authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding obligations, authorizing awarding sale of bonds to offer a best bid, the subscription and purchase of certain federal securities, and making other provisions regarding such bonds and matters incident thereto. What we have here, Mayor, is a refunding. We got with our financial advisors, we have the ability to refund four bonds that we have out there. One is a bond of certificate obligations from Series 2005A, certificate of obligation Series 2007, certificate of obligation Series 2009, and general obligation refunding bonds of 2009 to complete the formal process for the bond finances. This is the ordinance that we would have to approve. We are looking at a savings of approximately $1.3 million and this is an overall of the 13 years lifespan of the actual note and it would be a savings of $103,000 a year if we were to refund this note.
How much a year?
$103,000. And the lifespan of the actual note, which is 13 years, we're not increasing the existing note. The note is right now for 13 years, which will remain at that and for the life, it would be $1.3 million.
Okay, so the interest rate is?
We're looking at an interest rate of 2.5%. Also, we do have Mr. Bob Henderson-
And we had what before?
Do you have that amount for me, please? 4.6.
4.6 and now we're bringing it down to 2.5.
To 2.5, Mayor, with the savings, again, total amount of years of the 13 years of $1.3 million.
Okay, so what is the ordinance number?
4372.
4372?
Yes, sir.
I saw movement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4372, bringing down the interest rate from 4.6 to 2.5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.6?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 4.6 is the authorization to solicit bids for stop-loss insurance. In 2015, the City of Mission entered into a contractual agreement with HCC, Houston Casualty Company, for stop-loss insurance. Due to industry standards, the contract term was for one year. Stop-loss insurance is needed for the 2016-2017 fiscal year to cap any excess costs exceeding our specific deductible for medical and prescription costs. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids and authorize the city's agent, GEF Financial Group, to conduct solicitation for stop-loss insurance. Staff is recommending to authorize Ricardo Filisola with GEF Financial Group to solicit bids for stop-loss insurance.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.9, 4.8, no?
4.7, Mayor.
4.7.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 4.7, authorization to award bid for St. Clair Road whining improvements. On May 23rd, 2016, City Council authorized staff to solicit bids for St. Clair Road whining improvements. The City of Mission has accepted and opened seven bid responses for this project. Staff recommends awarding base bid of $91,679 to RDH Site and Concrete, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Attached, please find bid tabulations and recommendations later from Melton and Hunt. Staff recommendation, authorization and award bid to RDH Site and Concrete for the amount of $91,679.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize to award the bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.8? Dominguez?
Mayor, City Council, the Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to reenter into interlocal agreement for the Educational Resource Officer Program between the City of Mission and Sheri Land ISD for the 2016-17 school year. A total of six police officers will be assigned to the school district during the school year. The total amount of the interlocal agreement is $319,701.28. Staff is recommending approval of the interlocal agreement for the year-round program.
I move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Next one, Mayor, City Council, the Mission Police Department received a request for approval of an ordinance establishing a three-way stop intersection at Holland Avenue and Cleo Dawson Street. There has been numerous complaints by other motors in regards to not being able to turn either right or left onto Holland from Cleo Dawson. On July 5th, the Traffic Safety Committee reviewed the concerns and voted unanimously to recommend the placing of a three-way stop intersection. The request is being forwarded to you for your review and consideration.
I move for approval. Second.
Mayor, I have a question.
Motion and a second to approve?
Ordinance 4373.
4373. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, what is this gonna do to Rankin Street?
Rankin? That's one of the things that we are looking at and obviously, we have to monitor that carefully. There is some traffic that comes out of Rankin and Yolanda in that area. Fortuna subdivision obviously comes off of 20th Street. We'll monitor that closely. There's, I think, enough space for some of the traffic, but you know, that's one of the things that, we have much more traffic on Cleo Dawson because of the school setting and both in the morning and the afternoons that, you know, that's where we're having most of the problems. And somehow, I think we can deal with the situation on Rankin because the traffic density there is a lot less than on Cleo Dawson. Thank you, Chief. Yes. Thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Benson? Authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of safe fall materials?
Mayor, we're at 4.10. This is the May 2016 financial statements.
410, financial statements, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.10 is for the approval of the May 2016 financial statements. The adjusted total beginning fund balance for all funds was $30,671,413. Total revenues for the period were $5,064,350 and total expenses were $4,767,939, leaving an ending fund balance of $30,967,824. Total assets for the period were $149,381,229. Total liabilities are $58,149,455, resulting in total net assets of $91,231,773. This item is now before you.
I move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.11?
Item 4.11 is for the approval of the attached budget amendments. There are two requests. The first is in the MDC Fund. This request is to set up the budget for the support services for the Madero International Vehicular and Rail Bridge in the amount of $30,000. Next, we have a request from the MDC Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $6 million in revenues for loan proceeds and $6 million in appropriations for real property. This request is to set up the budget for purchase of real property for a retail project on 19.79 acres. This item is now before you.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the request of Capital Projects Funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
412, Mr. Benson?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Have item 4.12, seeking authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of safe and fall material for existing placades. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of safe fall material for existing placades for various parks throughout the city that have been worn and eroded through the years. Material will be acquired based on durability, drainage, accessibility, and that which will meet the current product that's in place. Staff recommendation is approval to solicit bids.
So moved.
Second, Mayor.
The motion and a second to go ahead and authorize, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 4.13 is authorization to solicit bids for sandblasting materials. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids for crushed glass medium for sandblasting of metal surfaces in preparation for painting of our picnic shelters and pavilions in our city parks. Staff's recommendation is authorization to solicit these bids.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize to solicit bids for sandblasting materials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
That is the end of our agenda. We already done our executive session, so we do need a motion to go ahead and-
We need to take action on 71A?
And 72.
71A, we already went through it, no?
We haven't had action.
We need to, we just did action on the 4.4, Mayor. We need to go to the executive session.
7.1, in executive session, we come back from executive session and we need to have action on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On 7.1A, Mr. Mayor, this is the consultation with attorney regarding the legal authority and the legal status of the type of ordinance prohibiting plastic bags. And after our discussion in executive session, it appears that the council wishes to-
Yes. We're gonna be working on trying to have an ordinance ready for the city council and have several public hearings and see if we can have an ordinance that would draw away with plastic bags in our stores. We feel very, very strong about cleaning up our city and most of our streets, our expressway, even if we mow it, it still looks horrible with those plastic bags. So, we wanna bring this to this community of Mission and see if they can support us and go along with the idea of having plastic bags out of here. And they can, I think stores can go ahead and sell them a bag for five cents or, we just don't think that it's, it looks very nice and it's also costing us a lot of money for the picking up, after we do mow the streets, we do have to send our staff to go pick up the pieces of plastic bags. And it's costing us some money and that's the only thing we need to do to keep this community clean and it's environmental, it's bad for our cattle and it's bad for our cats and dogs and animals that we might have at home. So, we're gonna try and ask the community to support us and that's what we're gonna be doing on 7.1. I don't know if we need any legal, any-
No further action is necessary on that item.
Only that we will be presented by the attorney our ordinance and we'll probably have some public hearings for people and give us a yes or a no, but I'm very convinced that the council is very much in favor and myself in favor of doing away with them. The city manager is also very in favor of doing away with them, so, and that's all we have today, so.
Mr. Mayor, we still have-
7.2, Mayor.
7.2A, Mr. Mayor, this is the consideration of the tax resale bids. There were four taxes up for consideration-
There were four taxes up for consideration. Those included T-127711B, T-95111J, T-56108A, and T-20710G. We would need a motion at this time, Mr. Mayor, to approve Resolution 1465, accepting all bids with the exception of T-20710G and to authorize the mayor to execute all tax resale deeds conveying the approved property.
Is Resolution 1465?
That's correct, sir.
Second.
We have, need a motion?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance 1465. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Is it okay? Are we done?